Michael?
Michael?
Can you check the voice? Check, check. Check, is everybody here? All right. Uh, we're gonna call this meeting some order with a couple of things. Uh, there's still plenty of seating over here if you'd like to have a seat. Restrooms are right over here on the east end. Uh, I, I would like to conduct this and get business taken care of and all of us get home before ten o'clock. Anyway, uh, so, uh, we will call the order this special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners meeting. And, uh, the discussion is the National, uh, National Electric Transmission Corridor. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to get, uh, I think they need it a little louder maybe some of them. Uh, the, the purpose of tonight's meeting is, uh, mainly so we can coordinate with each other and network, uh, and then we can come up with a solution of how to best combat this. I, I have been in contact. Uh, I have been in contact with, uh, with some of the counties in Kansas that are currently dealing with this. And they, uh, they have got together. Oh, uh, a group to, uh, to create an area within these counties for habitat conservation things. I still have been in contact with them. This, this is not something I don't believe that, uh, it's gonna be a one meeting and we're done. It's gonna be, uh, a constant battle to, to get this taken care of. Uh, I do ask also that you silence your phones to keep, uh, keep anything from interruptions. Uh, we do have tonight with us, uh, Jason Gomez. He's our current county assessor. Glenn and Craig is the county clerk. Ron DeMarkham, District Three Commissioner. And Commissioner Chris Redding, District Two. And I'm Zach Cabot, it's Payne County District One Commissioner. I do believe, uh, Senator Chuck Hall is here as well. Stand to be recognized, okay? Senator Chuck Hall, thank you for being here. Are there any other elected officials or official-elect?
We have.
Where are we at? Okay, all right. Molly Jenkins, correct? Uh, she's a House member. I believe, uh, was, is taking Don Tally's seat, correct? Yes. So, thank you all for being here. Uh, I think, uh, if we, uh, come together and have a united voice together, then, uh, we're gonna speak louder. And if, uh, today there was a call, uh, on these groups of counties in Kansas, and Oklahoma was represented in these groups of counties. And, uh, and that list is continually growing, uh, of counties that, uh, have an interest in, uh, protecting their constituents. Today, Commissioner Redding, uh, presented a draft resolution that I believe will be on our next county commissioner agenda. And it's creating the policy as this group of counties in Kansas has stated they have done to help, uh, combat this. And I will let him, uh, present that at this time.
Thank you all very much for coming here tonight. It's a, an honor and a privilege to be able to represent y'all and to, to fight for this particular cause that affects actually all of us. To me, this is about one of the most un-American things that, that's been happening around here. Uh, the way that they've gone about it is just not right. Bullying people to, to take their land, family land, and, and the, and your ownership for generations. Uh, all the hopes and dreams to get tied into that kind of stuff, uh, just basically dashed so that some Yankee can lick some lunch, if you wanna just put it kind of blunt. It's just, it's just not, it's just not right. And so, uh, I'm not gonna read the whole thing because frankly, it's six pages and I think y'all probably don't wanna do that. But it does go through and, and talks about the foundation of what they're doing, uh, and then what we, uh, expect or what we want to stand behind on our side. And, uh, I'll shoot a couple of them. Whereas President Biden has set a national goal by executive order to completely transition America's electric power generation to one hundred percent renewable resources by 2035, which required doubling and perhaps tripling the capacity of the U.S. transmission system. The goal is based on an administrative decision designed for the Paris Accord, an international agreement that was never ratified by the U.S. Senate and does not reflect the views of a majority of people in this country. And whereas this self-defined goal to decarbonize the U.S. economy was adopted with no public process and without congressional approval, even though such fundamental transformation of the U.S. economy has caused further congestion on America's power grid and it poses substantial higher costs to consumers. And it just goes on kind of like that. I mean, we just, we just missed out on all this stuff. And I know y'all, but it gives, uh, definite, uh, cases, court cases. And when we get down to the now therefore re-resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Payne County, Oklahoma, that it is a policy of Payne County that the federal government's proposed Midwest Plains and Plains Southwest National Electric Corridors Plan violates longstanding traditions regarding eminent domain, which has been recognized by federal courts as the primary provenance of state and local governments. That no federal agency has asked this county for its use on proposed NIETC, nor itself with any necessary land acquisition, nor has this county done anything concerning this justified preemptive use of federal eminent domain. The U.S. Department of Energy and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission both failed in their legal requirements under federal law to consult and coordinate with the state and local governments prior to beginning any process. In reference to single authorities, no federal agency should undertake any new land acquisition for proposed NIETCs by eminent domain or otherwise without the express agreement of the county commissioners and Oklahoma Legislature. Now, by one, this is a piece of background information, by law, they should be going through the state and through the county curves as they're making their plans, before they set their plans in town. And this has not happened in either case. So, in, in my opinion, with my law degree from the internet law, this is, this is illegal and unconstitutional at this point. All matters involving land use planning should remain in the state jurisdiction as matters of primary state interest. Federal agencies should defer to state law and coordinate with state and local governments on all matters regarding land use planning. The proposed NIETCs are only vaguely described in math but could be harmful to the general welfare of the citizens of this county. And this county should be directly involved in federal decisions related to NIETCs, including matters concerning usage of eminent domain and land acquisition, not merely with intent equal to individuals, but as full jurisdictional partner whose policy carries the weight of civil public dependence. And there's a little bit more to this than just those words. The county commissioners and actually the counties themselves are agents of the state of Oklahoma, running the business of this particular piece of land that shapes kind of like a post. That's our job, is to run the business of this county. And we've been totally sidestepped in this very large piece of business affecting everyone. DOE and FERC must not proceed with any NIETC plan in Oklahoma, therefore fully consulting the states and all counties involved, but fully including them in the decision-making process. Under state laws related to eminent domain as a subdivision of the state of Oklahoma, this county will assert its jurisdiction to hold public hearings regarding any proposed land acquisition or land use planning in areas that could affect this county. And federal managers will be expected to attend, disclose details of any proposals, and answer any questions that may arise, like why the heck did it eighteen miles of east? That's something we still don't know. If anyone does, I'll tell you that. And then the Oklahoma Attorney General should be prepared to defend the primary jurisdiction of the state local government, resisting any attempts to preemptively impose federal eminent domain powers in this state. And this county may elect to take legal action to defend its citizen's interests and to preserve agriculture and other existing land use. And the Oklahoma Attorney General is expected to defend the interests of this county and any citizens who object to any all federal intrusion on those land uses. The doubt permission of the counties involved and should make it clear the state's intention to defend those interests in court if necessary. And finally, it's the sense of this county that all Oklahoma counties should work together as one coalition to defend state and local jurisdictions of the land, the planning against all threats, including federal eminent domain powers. This should be official state policy and official policy in all counties. That's what we're aiming to do, that's what we're aiming to stand up for. And we hope you all will do what we've done now. Thank you.
Did the field trip for Mark Wayne Mullen make it? Okay, all right. Do you mind coming up and, do you have anything you'd like to add to this, or? Is collecting information?
I will say, um, I have my card. If anyone wants to grab that.
Okay, all right. She has, uh, cards available for anyone who'd like to reach out to, uh, Senator Mark Wayne Mullen's office. What was your name?
Emma Alexandra.
Emma Alexandra, okay. Uh, here I also have a letter from the Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma, uh, for the Payne County Commissioners. It says, "My name is Jacob Keys. I'm the chairman of the Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma. I apologize for not being able to attend today's meeting in person, but I wanted to just leave you with this letter expressing the tribe's objection to the Cimarron Link Transmission Project. While I respect the fact that officials from Energy have researched out, to, uh, reached out to the tribes in advance for comments regarding this project, I must point out that these transmission lines are directly connected uh, to possible and/or proposed wind turbine projects in the area. While my authority is restricted to our Iowa lands, I must fight against these projects as they are a danger to one of our tribe's most sacred beings, uh, most sacred beings, the bald eagle. Now, the Iowa tribe has long been a partner with local municipalities and the state of Oklahoma. We work closely with, uh, counties to build roads and bridges. We are currently working to expand our medical care facility in Perkins, which serves all members of the community, both native and non-native. We are also a major employer in the county and provide a long list of other services to our surrounding communities. I say this to express our, our desire to be great Oklahomans and partners with our surrounding community. As such partners, we ask that you consider any and all actions possible to restrict these transmission lines." Many of you know that we have an eagle, uh, I don't know, every area in Perkins, uh, uh, the gray snow eagle house. Our people believe the eagle is sacred to our culture and way of life because they are the only creatures to, uh, to, uh, able to fly high and, uh, enough to speak to our creator. Therefore, these birds play a large role in our prayers and ceremonies. When we release these birds from our aviary, uh, we do so in hope that they will avoid the dangers that landed them in the care facility to begin with. This is why we oppose any projects that are directly or indirectly connected to wind turbine projects. While we are working with federal agencies, including the Department of Interior, to stop these projects from taking place anywhere near our territories, we realize that, uh, this process is slow. So, we ask that our community partners take action to help us protect these birds that are not only important to our tribe, but also to each of U.S. Americans. Respectfully, Jason Keys, Chairman, uh, of the Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma. And I would like to, uh, invite Rebecca up.
I'm right here.
Okay.
You want me to use this or? Hello, I'm Rebecca Carrick, and I just wanna thank you for coming out on a stormy night and muddy roads out in the country. Really appreciate all the support. And on a side note, the aviary is really interesting to go visit. You have not been south of Perkins to see that. But first of all, I'd like to thank all the county personnel here because what we've seen in our county, you don't find everywhere. They're all behind this fight, this effort. Sheriff Cabot has researched with a number of counties in Kansas. They've reached out, they've read numerous emails that I've sent, and I just am so appreciative of all of their support. We, uh, I grew up southwest up here on a farm, went to school in Perkins, open state, worked and raised a family, and we always wanted to move back to the land. We never lost sight of our goal to live on the land. And we were approached by a land man working for Cimarron Link for an easement transmission. And we, you know, we kind of tried to ignore it. We weren't too excited about it, and he just kept showing up, et cetera. So, we're kind of like, okay, we're gonna have to look at this. And he's like, just redline everything you don't want. And it sounds like maybe not everybody's easement is the same, but in our easement, it included language that they could later add wind turbines, solar facilities. It was signing an agreement for cameras, telecommunications lines, noise, voice, just everything was in there. And they, it was per- perpetuary, is that's like perpetual? It was to last forever. And the indemnity clause was that they would not be responsible for any known or unknown risk was in there. So, anyway, we got an attorney at our own expense and redlined a lot of things, including, they had an exhibit that showed the transmission line would go along the South fence line. And we're like, well, we don't like that, but we have to, that's the best place. So, we put that in writing also, and that they would have a gate right there to access it. Well, they got with Energy, the company behind Cimarron Link, and they would not agree to that. And they said, well, we're gonna use your road, and we're gonna put a lock on it, but we'll give you a key. So, you can imagine how happy we were about all that. And this was all, we were negotiating in good faith before we even knew about this Department of Energy NIETC plan. We had no clue that that was even out there. And of course, once we heard about that, it was like, no way, we're, you're never going to sign this easement at all. And so, that's kind of where we've gone and started writing every elected official, local, state, federal, making phone calls into the county commissioner meeting. They were so receptive. And, you know, one of our fears is Cimarron Link is now saying, well, we're not gonna be part of DOE. We're gonna just put this link through here. If they can use eminent domain to take our lands and put the link through, that just sets a precedent for these other companies. And then the next company, till we get to that four to eighteen mile wide corridor, whatever it is. So, that's all part of our concerns. Uh, I do wanna thank Senator Hall for being here, incoming Representative Molly Jenkins, Mark Wayne McMullen's rep. And also, I'd like to introduce to you another incoming representative. I have to make sure which house, district, thirty-two, thirty-two. And that is Jim Shaw. He, uh, he ran with opposing industrial wind and solar and all kinds of green energy. And he really stands with us against this fight for the corridor. And it's, it's very interesting to hear what he will share with you and some hopes, I think, for our state. Jim, would you please come over here? We're, we're appreciative of you.
You guys hear me okay?
Take it out.
That would be better, all right. Thank you all for, for having me, and thank you Rebecca and Board of Commissioners. Thank you all so much. Um, like Rebecca said, I got into this race back in, in April primarily because there was an industrial wind project named for those just a few miles away from, from my home down in Lincoln County. I live on the west side of Chandler. Uh, my wife and I have two young daughters, nine and seven years old. Um, we moved out there about three and a half years ago in hopes of a peaceful rural country, quiet way of life, and hopefully a, a, you know, to become a generational type farm and ranch for, for my daughters and, and my grandchildren eventually. Um, but like many of you, our, our rural areas, our rural communities are under attack with wind and solar projects, with high-line projects, with transmission corridors. And quite frankly, the state of Oklahoma has welcomed all of this in with open arms. And I, I can't, I can't quite understand it yet. We've got an incredible oil and gas industry here that has been the huge backbone for our state for generations. I don't understand why we're not leaning into that and incentivizing and promoting more oil and gas production. Um, just a, a few, a few stats real quick to really kind of drive home a lot of what Rebecca said and, and your commissioners already on how the transmission corridor and the rest of these green, I'm gonna call it green energy, we all know it's not green, right? There's nothing really green about it. Um, how they all interconnect and play with one another, okay? Um, these wind and solar projects, they gotta put their, their, whatever energy they do produce, they gotta put it on the grid, which requires the transmission corridors. If you don't have one, you don't have the other. They really need each other to survive. Um, wind generation in the state of Oklahoma since twenty-ten has increased nine hundred percent. Now, you would think our electricity rates here in the state, of, state of Oklahoma would have decreased during that same time period, but instead it's increased thirty-four percent. I know everybody in this room can attest to that, they're increased. In twenty-twenty-three, the state of Oklahoma lost almost sixty million dollars in gross production tax because of displaced natural gas. Also, in, in our region, within the Southwest Power Pool, within Oklahoma, there is only one out of one hundred and twenty-four projects in their interconnection queue that's related to coal or natural gas. The other hundred and twenty-three projects currently in queue, fifty-three battery projects, forty-six solar projects, and twenty-four wind projects. There's an agenda, y'all, and they're pushing it as hard as they possibly can right now. Sometimes these wind producers are, are dumping electricity onto our market and onto our grid at negative prices. They're literally paying people to take the electricity from them because they can't take, they can't put it out there anywhere else. We also, in the state of Oklahoma, have lost almost two billion dollars to renewable energy developers through production credits that haven't renewed their investment. In this eighteen-mile-wide transmission corridor, reiterating a lot of what, what has been said already tonight, eminent domain, forced through eminent domain to simply ship any kind of intermittent and unreliable energy that they may even manage to produce completely out of our state. Our state today is a net exporter of energy. We export energy. We produce, as of twenty-twenty-three statistics, we produce in the state of Oklahoma almost three times more energy than we consume. We don't need this extra stuff, and quite frankly, I know a lot of you and a lot of people further down in my district, we don't want it. So, at the end of the day, why, why is, again, green energy and NI, NIETC corridor go hand in hand? Because without the other, they're completely unnecessary, without wind and solar complexes, data mining centers, I believe there's a data, data mining center up here in this area that's being proposed as well. I sat in on an interim study at the Capitol a couple of weeks ago. I heard representatives from Southwest Power Pool, O G and E, P S O, and other entities, every single one of them said that the additional demand for energy that they're screaming about, that they're saying that we need to have all this additional output for, is because of AI data centers. AI data centers, artificial intelligence data centers. They also said, somebody indicated that one single AI data center requires the same amount of energy as the city of Edmond, which is four hundred and fifty megawatts and an eighty-five square mile city for one data center. So, much like you guys, uh, many people here, um, further down where I live in, in Chandler and Lincoln County, y'all were born and raised in these country rural, quiet, peaceful towns. And I, I moved my family out there to enjoy that kind of life and to raise my girls in that kind of life. And it's at stake, and it's at risk of changing forever. I believe we all need to come together, just like y'all are doing tonight, and we need support together right now to protect our land, our livelihoods, and our legacies. God bless you all so much. Thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you. Uh, some of the things, uh, that has come to mind that we can do as a county, uh, that other counties have done, not necessarily for this type of situation, but, uh, when oil is booming, uh, and, and sometimes these companies just come in and they'll, they'll put an entrance in, and, and then they've got your road destroyed before you even know that they're there. Uh, is, and, and I may propose this on a near agenda, is the county, uh, policy for industrial access permits. Meaning that anytime an, an, an industry is wanting to gain access to a piece of property off of a public roadway, then they have to get a permit for that. And every one of those entrances for one of these, uh, towers or, or wherever they're going to put these poles up, that could be another stepping stone that they would have to go through, uh, to get done. And that's something that we can't do. That's something that, that the legislator, legislature has given us power to do is control our rights away. Uh, another thing I'd like to remind everybody, if you have not signed in, please do so, uh, over here, uh, either on the paper or on the, uh, computers. And that way, uh, and is there anybody here, raise your hand, that does not wanna be contacted and kept up to date on what's going on? Okay, so Rebecca?
Right.
You'll note that you can share this with every email on there. Uh, anything we're doing to update this, any, uh, future things we have coming, and when we, uh, approve this resolution, I'll share it with Rebecca, and she can send it to, uh, to everybody out here. Uh, at this time, I would accept any questions. And if you, if you do have a question, I'd ask that you come up here and state your name for the record for our county clerk, and then you can ask your question. And, uh, whoever may have an answer can provide that answer. Okay? Please.
My name is Kim Angles, A-A-G-O-L-E-N. Question is, uh, Commissioner? I understand that there's counties in Kansas who their county commissioners passed zoning ordinances restricting any of the wind turbine farms, the solar farms, or the high transmission lines. And that has been now spread to Oklahoma, where Oklahoma County did this. Is this something of Payne County would entertain? And I understand it has to go to a vote. Is that something that we would entertain?
Uh, to my knowledge, there has not been any zoning passed for this. Uh, in, in Oklahoma, the population of the county, I have to, I believe, has to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand before we can do zoning, unless it's zoning passed by a vote of the people.
It's on the ballot for Craig County tomorrow. They're voting on that.
I mean, we, we could, uh, put something on a, on a ballot, but it's probably gonna be a while before, I mean, uh, I, I don't know, we have to speak with our legislature board.
No!
No?
Absolutely not.
And there's a lot of-
Oklahoma is not Kansas. The laws are completely different. You cannot pass a zoning law just to keep the wind turbines out. You will get a county zoning board that will not be elected. And that's what you're gonna get. You're gonna get zoning, and you're gonna get wind turbines, and you're gonna get solar farms, and you're gonna get high transmission lines. You're gonna get all the bad with none of the good. If you wanna fix this, you need to fix it at the state legislature, not at the county zoning level.
Right. My understanding is our state legislatures, though, are in favor of this, and they're the ones that are pushing it.
They're pushing county zoning?
No, no, I'm sorry, the, the turbines and the solar and the, they're the ones pushing that.
Letters here, have them fix it. County zoning is gonna get you unelected officials that are gonna be setting zoning rules in your county, and you will not be able to stop them once you give zoning.
That's one of the big concerns in Craig County. They did get an opinion from Attorney General Roman.
It was not an opinion.
Okay, what was it?
It was not an opinion. I don't know what the actual nubile term does, but there was fancy language at the end of that letter.
Yes, I saw the letter.
It said that it was not an opinion.
Okay, 'cause that is-
It was not a legal opinion. And they will also say that agriculture is exempt, but it says that agriculture-
Zach, Zach, can you have this deal with coming up to a mic? Go, we can talk here.
Well, yeah, everybody would like to be able to hear what you're saying.
My question is, I'm the one up here.
Yeah.
My question is, is this something the commissioners consider?
Uh, we, we could look at it.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a question.
But it's good to know, Liam.
Yeah, it's good. Well, okay, so, some of the concern has been if, if the county did pass a zoning clause, then, then there's gonna be people over that zoning. And, and, uh, when I first took office, there was some people, they, they owned some property, and then, uh, somebody moved in next door, and they were gonna put a trailer house there, and they, they wanted us to have zoning. I said, well, zoning is great until it negatively affects you. I said, in such case, say if you bought a house and you wanted to add a, a one-car garage onto the side, but then it's put too close to your property line, then you couldn't do that. So, then you have somebody telling what you can't, telling you what you can't do on your own property. So, as far as zoning goes, uh, right now, I'm glad that, that we don't have zoning because we, we can never make everybody happy. And that's all there is to it. But I am fully against having some companies come in and being able to claim eminent domain on, on our land. I, I am fully against that. And I am fully against that. And I think there are better ways to address this than zoning, which could eventually negatively affect you, just the same way this is.
Does this land not zone for agriculture?
Well, the county, we don't have any way of zoning anything because we don't meet the population threshold. Unless we put it to a vote of the people within this county.
Don't you have a flooding zone?
We have a floodplain board, and that is power that's given to us by the state already. And from my understanding, even these towers that are built would have to meet with the floodplain manager in order to place a tower in those areas. That's already something we have. Okay, good. Yeah, come forward, please.
My name is Deanne Clinton, and we traveled over here from Garfield County so that we can hear what y'all had for your county, and we appreciate this very much. I was speaking with Representative DeRitzky last week, and he let me know that in his area, Simran Link is not part of the NIETC, which we know, but they are actually threatening landowners in his area with legal action if the landowners are unwilling to allow surveyors on their property. Have you had that happening in your county yet? You have?
I'm in summer. There's been people calling. I'm sorry. Yeah, we've been receiving calls with people complaining about that very thing, about being threatened with them in their lane, about being threatened for a number of, like, "If you don't settle, we're gonna take it, you're not gonna get anything," kind of threat, which is really obscene to me, but yeah, we have burden threats through this area as well.
No, it happened. Are you telling them to contact your sheriff if that happens, or what is their recourse?
It's already been, I mean, it's after the fact, so we don't have the ability to say, "Oh, do that."
Senator Hall, do you know about the laws regarding surveys? I understand that the laws allow a surveyor to go onto your property and survey. So like, if we're having a bridge built, we have to hire an engineer, and the engineer has to get a survey, and they are legally able to go survey.
But it's with a private company? Okay, this is a private company, not a government?
I'm not certain about that. Okay, Senator, the law will stack up from the floor about this tall. It's difficult to know at all, but that is a good question, and we can research that about surveying for private companies. Is there any others that have a question? Come on up, please.
My name is Diana Bateson, and we have Senator Hall in the building. He is a current member of the legislature for the state of Oklahoma. I think it would be nice to hear from him exactly what the state is going to do, what they're working towards doing to keep all of this out.
Well, so much for just sitting around and listening tonight. It's nice to see everybody, and I was feeling a little outnumbered, but I see the Noble County Sheriff made it, so I appreciate you being here this evening. So, few Noble County, a couple Noble County folks. Senator Chuck Hall, I represent Senate District 20. When we redistricted, and the reason that I think I'm paying a little closer attention to Payne County is I have from Country Club Road back to the west, just to kind of let you know a little bit about the district. I have all of Noble County, I have all of Pawnee County, I have most of Logan County, and about a third of Kingfisher County. So, it's a pretty broad district, and I'm really kind of paying attention to some of the Payne County issues. Let me tell you, federal preemption scares the living you-know-what out of me. That is a scary term, and when you pair that up with eminent domain, everybody in this room should be very, very concerned. I was not up to speed on this. I didn't know much about it until just a couple of weeks ago, when I had the invitation to come over. And so, it's not just that I wasn't paying attention. When I started talking to members of the state legislature, senators and House members, this is what should scare you, too. They didn't know anything about it either. So, we've got a whole room of people in here today that need to be making a connection with their senator and their House member, and explaining to them how important this is to you, and we not just need to do it here in Payne County, we need to do it all across the state of Oklahoma. And so, at some point, it has to be incumbent on you to make those connections with your House member and your senator. Nobody had called me until I heard from the Payne County commissioners. So, you've got an active group of commissioners here that are very concerned and turned it on for me. So, what did I do over the past couple of weeks? So, I have a lunch with the Attorney General on Wednesday. A day after tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the Attorney General to talk about this specific issue. I've talked to two corporation commissioners about my concern about what is happening. I have a session with the governor coming up to figure out what, if anything, that he's interested in. I've been working with our legal staff on the Senate to talk about what we can do as a state to protect from federal preemption, which is, again, is extremely scary. I'm not versed on that. I don't know what we can do. But what I can tell you is that leading up to session coming up in February, this is the right time to be looking at what kind of bills and legislation that we can file and put in place and get passed pretty quickly so that we can control some of this that's coming down the path. So, I need time. I am actively making the calls, talking to the people, putting this on their radar, but we need your help, too. So, you've got, after tomorrow, you're gonna have a new state senator in this area. You've talked, you've seen one of the new House members coming in from the Lincoln County area. You're gonna have some new representation in the House of Representatives. Make contact with those people. Depending on how the outcome of the election is tomorrow, whether it's Democrat or Republican, makes no difference. You need to reach out, and you need to tell them that this is an important issue that's gonna affect those people in the county. So, those connections are gonna make all the difference, and it's gonna light a fire under the Oklahoma State Legislature, and that's what you need to do. So, I will do everything that I possibly can to look into this and see how we can protect Oklahoma's right to make decisions for themselves for as long as I hold this office. And so, I'll work as hard as I can on your behalf and the constituents that I have in Senate District 20, certainly in Payne County. So, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I did not ask for the, I'm not stealing the mic to take a political moment, did not ask for this. But you all can find me at the Capitol. My email, for those of you that are writing, that have a pen and paper, it's chuck.hall@oksenate.gov. I'll remain in constant contact with the Payne County commissioners, and I'll do everything I can to light a fire under the Oklahoma Legislature, and those can make a difference at the HE's office and at the corporation commissioners. So, I appreciate your time to speak this evening.
I would like to say that Senator Hall has been very receptive every time I reach out, even though he's not my senator for where I live. I look at every elected official in the district I serve as my House representative or senator. And Senator Hall has been very receptive and open and responsive every time I reach out to him. I will, and I think I have already sent Rebecca the emails for the current elected officials. And after tomorrow, I don't know how long it takes to get an email address, but as those update, I'll continue to send them to Rebecca, and she can send them out. And like I've said, when an elected official hears from their constituency, they start to listen. One or two, depending on the issue, they might blow it off, but if each one of you reach out in an email to your local elected official and your state elected official, it's gonna catch their attention. And I believe they will start doing, they will check into it and investigate and see what they can do about it. Are there any other questions?
I have a statement.
Okay, come on in.
My name is Lawrence Lika, and 15 miles east of here, they're already doing this to us. I'm in the middle of hiring, not in the middle of hiring a lawyer, we've been at it for a while. They are running smooth overs on eminent domain. I've had to force them off my land. Even though I haven't settled, they feel like they have the right to come through. Your brother is my representative, my legal representation. Guys, they're running overs. I mean, they are forcing their way through, giving pennies on the dollar on something that they are forcing us to do. I need help because my court date's coming up very soon. This is all happening all around me, land next to me, land on the other side of me. Already have poles in place, and it's happening. I just have one of the handful, maybe five people in the state that hasn't agreed to this yet and still fighting my way through it, did not let it happen, but it's happening.
Just so everybody knows, what are you speaking of?
It is the transsource transmission line coming through. I think it's transsource. Yes. And it's eminent domain because they involve a PSO in it. I believe OG&E is the reason why they get to do the eminent domain.
What's your area yet?
1851 intersection.
Your own 18.
There you go. There you go. But yes, anybody that has anything that could possibly help me keep them off my land. I do not want this, and have not even spoke to them, but had to get legal representation to keep it from happening. I mean, they put gates in before I even had, I made them put the fence back up. But it's happening. I mean, I have no choice, and they are bullies, and it is going on. They say they have the right to come in on me, whether I let them or not, and even though I haven't settled, and they're just out of the kindness of their hearts not doing that, I guess. But they have a stack of paperwork saying they can still come on me and do this without the easement. But anybody has any ideas on how to help? It's like, within the next two months, I bet anything, I'll have to make some sort of decision.
Well, I did read the documents, and some of the other documents, that if it's accurate, these things, if they go to trial, it will be held in the district court here. And I would say if something like that did go to district court, if we could pack the courthouse with people that are opposing to it just to help handle, it will all help each one of us.
Just a further comment on that. I know in Hughes County, the group there with wind turbines went on someone else's property and cut down all their trees. And they said, "Oh, our mistake. We meant to be next door." So now, those people are trying to recover the loss of all those trees on their land that they really didn't have permission to go on. But working across the state, like Deanne mentioned, she's from Enid. We have someone from Creek County here trying to get a group going just like this. We have Storybook Farms here. She and incoming Representative Shaw were both in McIntosh County this morning. They maybe had a couple hours of sleep, finding massive, over 700-foot wind turbines that they just found out are going in there, huge numbers. And Storybook also brought us the signs, if you would like one. They're $40 cash or check, and we can get more if we want them. And somebody mentioned working across the state. That's one thing that we're trying to do, and Storybook's helped put a group together, that we're trying to all work together across the whole state to be a one voice. Excuse me. The petition, that's the other thing we're gonna talk about? Because he might can help us.
News Media helps four, five, and nine. I mean, could we reach out to them?
Well, I mean-
Get them up to speed.
They're already present here. They're already news presence here. We can reach out to, we'll take the sign-in sheets and let the media know that there was this many people in attendance with concerns of people having their land taken from them, and we can see where it goes.
My name is Dan Moody. I'm from Cushing. A friend of mine lives over Schlegel America, as we call it, and he's noticed in the past month or two helicopters and planes going all over. He's an Indian. He's got some Indian land there next to the river, and they've been flying over and surveying from the air. And he knows what he's talking about. I mean, he's intelligent and not like me. But I called the Drumrite Newspaper. They're just gonna try to get someone here to represent the paper and see what's going on. But he's got two of them that's sick, one of them's having a baby, and so he's gonna try, he wants somebody. And I know if you're filming, he would probably appreciate if you could get ahold of him, because he has the Cushing and the Drumrite Paper. I called the Perkins Paper, and he's already into this. And he said he's contacted the Department of Energy, and it's like trying to wring water out of a rock to get an answer. So, they're hiding it. So, like they said, don't sit around and think it's gonna cure itself. You gotta stand up. Number one and foremost is pray. Thank you.
Our county clerk does put these recording of this meeting, it will be online, and you can share that link with others. If enough of us share with News 9 or News Channel 4 or 6, then they will know there's something to this. So, it's, again, a united voice coming together to let others know, because I don't think anybody wants their land taken from them by eminent domain. I did also get, it's a letter intended as a formal objection to the proposed NIETC line. And this is from Barton County, Kansas, and I plan to kind of edit that and make it something from Payne County, and we'll put it in a board meeting to be approved and sent in. But I would say, again, here's an email address, NIETC@hq.doe.gov. And let's fill their inbox up and let them know that Payne County is willing to stand for this. And as Rebecca has said, if we can get other counties to join in, the more people we have, the louder voice we're gonna have. Rebecca, what did you ask him a moment ago?
Oh, the petition. We have some ideas. If this can work as a survey, is there a better way to do a petition? Should we actually try to take written things to the state capitol? What should we do going forward with the petition? That's the question. We've had like 50-some responses on the survey petition.
Okay. Yeah, you did it on Survey Monkey, I believe?
So, is that a good way, or is there another way?
I'm not sure. I think the whole point of a petition is just letting your elected officials know where you stand on it, your official, or that's it. And where is that available? Will you send that petition back out again?
Yes, we can send that out again in an email. If I get all the email addresses, that'd be a good way, or text also.
Okay.
And it's very simple. It's just, do you oppose this? Yes, and then you put your information. Basically, that's it.
Okay. And like was stated in our commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, as Ms. Danny, a former House representative, she said, "It's best if you contact, every one of you contact your elected official." And really, from what she stated, a petition is not nearly as powerful as if each one of you contacted. And really, if you have the time and ability, when session kicks off, go visit your legislator down at the Capitol. I know in fishing, they have a legislative lunch, and the local elected, well, I say local. Our state elected officials usually come to that, and they speak on things of what's going on at the Capitol, and they offer opportunity for questioning, and I believe they do that in Stillwater as well. Attend some of those things, and let your elected officials know where you stand on this. Uh, attend some of those things and let your elected officials know where you stand on this and, and what your desires are for things moving forward. I will stay in contact with Senator Hall and, uh, the newly elected officials, Molly Jenkins and Jim Shaw. And, and we'll see what we can get going. I know, uh, ACCO is the Association of County Commissioners of Oklahoma. And we take legislative requests or ACCO does, they have a legislative liaison. And, and I will try to get something together, uh, some kind of bill proposed to, to see if we can get something passed to help eliminate, uh, things like this. So you have something?
One more thing, as usual, I forgot while I was up there. Contact, uh, I think it's Freedom Radio Station ninety-six-nine. Now, my daughter called them earlier today, but all she could do was leave a message. If that's all we can do and we can get Sam scurrying it out, they are a tremendous radio station for freedom.
Jake Mary.
Jake Mary, yes.
Zach, as we look at things we might can do, some people, some people, some places have tried setback requirements. You know, Oklahoma only has one point five miles from a hospital, an airport, I guess it is, and a school. But the one point five mile for homes was removed when that was written for the state. So any setback requirements? You know, when you're looking at western Oklahoma, you've got all this land, but when you get into some of these places, you might have subdivisions, et cetera. Yes, Neann, do you know something about that?
That's only for wind turbines.
Oh, right. Okay, so it couldn't do it. Okay, thank you. So that would not be for our corridor. And then moratorium, some people have tried that. Is that anything? You mentioned some of the road use and you can do road use agreements and try another thing. Some people have tried is writing into agreements, they have to put up a million dollars, whatever. It's been more for wind turbines, but the money to take those things down because they usually just get left and spread everywhere or whatever. So if any of those ideas or anything we can do at a county level also, and if anybody else knows of any other ideas, because that's what we're trying to come up with.
And then really, yes, go ahead.
Hey, my name is Robbie McComas. I'm from Lincoln County. My husband and I, Jeff McComas, have, uh, thirty years on our farm where we raise cattle. We were faced with a wind turbine, um, complex last February, so we've been fighting this a very long time. We have contacted our legislators. We had to replace one. They stood down. They said, um, we are for property rights. They will not help us with wind energy. So, um, if you all remember, um, Representative Kevin Wallace, every single time we went to him, he stood down and he said that he is for property rights. He belittled us and, um, a lot of the constituents were tired of being tr- ill-treated by him. Jim Shaw stood up and we got behind him. What I would like to reiterate is to me, right before your Senator Hall spoke, is what does Gittner Drummond think? I feel like the state of Oklahoma needs the largest hammer in the state to come down on all of these intrusions. Like Jim Shaw said, this is, these two things go hand in hand. The wind turbines, solar, the corridor, all of it is going together and it's going to ruin the face of Oklahoma for the future generations. I would like to know what Gittner Drummond thinks about the, um, power of our county commissioners. Can we do a moratorium? Can we not? And all this zoning and if you can't make that decision, if you don't have this already in place. It's foolishness and by the time we get the legislators to get on board, we're going to have all of this all over the state because it's going to take too long. What we need is to hurry up and we need everybody to stand up. I mean, we stood up in our ca- in our area, Storybook Farms and Jeff McComas and Jim Shaw. And a ten-year incumbent is out the door and he did not help us. And so I, I beg you people here, this is large. The face of this area right here and it affect, it affects us in Lincoln County too. Um, yes, get with your legislators. This man right here, sounds like he's made some good decisions. He's, he's, um, having a lunch with Gittner. Uh, I just hope that he can represent all of us and move the needle to protect. My little six-year-old granddaughter has been around my house enough. My husband and I have been on the news three times. She was at our home once the first time. She prayed a couple of days ago when she was at my house that no wind turbines would come. We appreciate our farm. We use it to raise cattle and we use it for our lifestyle. Um, that's where we have enjoyment, is walking outside. It is fishing by your pond or taking a walk or taking a ride on your horse and not looking at wind turbines and all those intrusions. We need to save our land for our future generations. And so whatever we can do, I'm just telling you that, um, Senator Green and Wallace from our area both said, we can put legislation in place, but it will not pass. So is it going to pass this year? They didn't write it because it wouldn't pass. What is it going to take? I beg you, Senator here. Give us some ideas, get some ideas from Gittner because the constituents, the people that live here don't want it.
I'm Rick Garber from Cushing and I can tell you what Gittner thinks. He, uh, he says under the Oklahoma Common Character laws, utility companies have rights of eminent domain. And you also have rights, but they're limited in fair market value. So it's a legislative change. It's what we were talking about a little bit earlier. And, and we've challenged this thought. Uh, our family's currently in the Supreme Court. They're hearing our case right now. And we're waiting on ruling whether or not Transsource has a right of eminent domain. Transsource is, uh, wanted to remain independent. So they could ca- uh, they could raise, uh, rates, transmission rates without going before the Corporation Commission. They want to raise that to PSO. PSO owns Transsource. AEP, Publicly Traded Company, owns both of them. AP, uh, Yole Investment Bankers back east, uh, taking Oklahoma land. And it's a, it's a sleight of hand. When the tra- when PSO goes before the, uh, Corporation Commission, they could say our transmission costs have increased. And, uh, usually the Corporation Commission will pass that rate hike on to us. It's going to take legislative action. That's the only way we're going to get it. And I'm afraid you're right, time's running out and these lines are being billed. And we may miss out on Transsource, but we really need to take a look at the corridor. But, but then I called the Governor's Office and I talked to Ken McQuaid. And, and Ken says it's going to turn into a, a, a federal energy project, which is going to supersede the rights of our sovereign state. We've got to get in front of it, legislative, get a plan. And, and, uh, I just challenge each and every one of you to, to reach out quickly and, and get in front of this. Maybe too late already. Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say? Come on in.
My name's Dylan Satterwhite, uh, landowner, businessman here local. Um, had a, I'm in Oklahoma State. I had a, uh, I guess after the commissioners meeting two, three weeks ago, I kind of, uh, uh, voiced my opinion on some things and did some research and, uh, I reached out to, there's probably forty, fifty people in this room that I contacted, asked them to be here tonight. Had an old college connection reach out to me. Kind of was a, uh, eye awakening deal. It was yesterday. He reached out to me, hadn't talked to him in years. He is a public relations specialist for a similar project. It's not Simron Link. I understand we're here tonight talking about Simron Link, but there's probably a hundred landowners in this room that have been contacted by one of these other projects that are looking to come through here. It's a pretty sizable company. I asked him, I invited him. I said, hey. He said, uh, I think maybe there's some misinformation about this thing that's going on. He lives three hours from here. Don't know how he knew what I said at the commissioners meeting, except somebody said something related on to him. He was on a private jet at Alabama football camp. He reached out to me, he said, hey, I think we need to talk about this. I said, well, I guess come to Stillwater and let's talk about it. And, uh, we kind of went back and forth a little bit and he said, you know, we're not really about the eminent domain thing. I said, that's, that's about as, that's about as good as I can, you know, as far as I can throw you, is what I consider that. Um, I said, if you really want to prove that to the people as a representative of one of those projects, why don't you come to Payne County and get in front of the people that are going to be there tomorrow night and let's talk about it? He said, I can't speak on behalf of that project, we're a different project. I said, sounds good because I've been approached by a landman of your project as well, so why don't you come speak on behalf of your project? He said, I won't be there to speak on anything, but we will have people there listening. That was directly from him yesterday morning. So I can tell you, there's people in this room right now that are looking at what the people are saying. They're looking at the feedback and they're filling the tempo with this room right now. And they're going back for project two, project three, project X, Y, Z. That's a competitor company down the road. So we have to take this thing to the next level. We have to make it bigger. We had forty people, fifty people at the commissioners meeting. Now we got a couple hundred here in a matter of a couple of weeks. Got to talk to your neighbors, got to talk to your friends, you got to talk to the people three houses down you don't like because it's important. We got to come together on a common goal to, to beat this thing. But I'm telling you, there's people in this room right now that are directly going back to report to boards or the feasibility study, uh, teams, uh, for some of these projects, right? That, that are filling the tempo with this and saying, how big of a project is it going to be? How big of a hurdle are we going to have when we go back, plan two, phase two, phase three, to approach these people about easements for a parallel project five miles down from the one that we're here discussing tonight? So I think that needs to be on the back of everybody's minds that that, that was said yesterday and I didn't like it. It didn't sit well and I thought I ought to pass that information along, uh, because they're, they're coming. Um, and, and, and his tempo and, and we were friends. We, we were, we were good friends in college. We got a lot of mutual friends, but it was more or less of, hey, don't, uh, I guess I was a bird under somebody's saddle pad. Don't, you know, don't stick your head up the greasy, the, the squeaky wheel gets greased. And, um, I didn't like that, so I thought it ought to be said, I thought it ought to be shared. And, uh, we, we've just got to take this thing bigger. Um, you know, I, I, I hope the county commissioners kind of taking, uh, and listening to what we said there two, three weeks ago and, and organizing this, putting this together to let people get up and speak. But, uh, the next one needs to be five times this size. And, and these, these, uh, senators, these House guys, we, we've got to get them all involved. Not one, not two, not one person showing up. You know, I, I heard, uh, uh, there were several people supposed to be here tonight. We said, well, somebody from this office, somebody from that office. They're not here. There's three people, elected officials or, uh, uh, elects here tonight. And I was told there was supposed to be eight or ten. So they're obviously not taking it seriously and it's, it's got to come from the people and go forward from there. We've got to get loud, we've got to get in their face and, you know, we got to show them that we're serious and we're not going to back down from this.
I should have come up with a good story, but I just slipped in the mud yesterday. That's it. Um, I'm not the plan, I'll tell you all that. My name is Stacy Hayes. Um, I'm a landowner in Logan County and I happened to see this in a Facebook group from all of all places. None of this was on my radar. None of this was on my radar. Um, my family's land is, I live on a hundred and sixty acres. And if you can imagine in nineteen twenty-seven, it was very hard for my family to get land. So my question is, is I've heard a lot of new words. I've heard a lot of things that I can research on Google. Is there a place where I can go, like a one pager, that tells me what this is? What I need to be looking for? And just, I need an overview. I need to take this back to my family. I need to take it back to my community. And I don't know where to start. I guess the email would be the first start. Is that it?
Yeah, I would imagine, uh, what Rebecca has done is send out, uh, what, what, what the issue is, is the Simron Link transmission line coming through and, and using eminent domain to take land by force. And, uh, what, what Payne County is doing is trying to do some things and what we can do to combat it and reaching out to our legislators and organizing meetings like this, uh, to educate, uh, others. And, and I like what he said about, uh, sharing it with your neighbors. If everybody goes and posts this on, if you have social media, share that. Uh, because if somebody else is on there and they know you, then they might catch their eye. I don't hardly ever get on social media, but, uh, so a one pager, I would think, uh, Rebecca would probably be the best asset for you to get with.
And if it doesn't exist, I'm more than happy to help you write it. Like, that's what I do at work all the time. I still want to. Yeah, a, a website would be nice, yes. But like, are you working with Logan County or is this something I need to go back and talk, to help talk them about?
I, I spoke with Monty Pierceman and, and he was going to try to make it tonight, but I, I guess he didn't. But, uh, I, I have been in communication with him and we're going to try to get a pool of counties together, uh, such as Kansas did, to try to educate and combat this.
All right, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
And you know, we have Molly Jenkins is the incoming state House rep that covers part of Logan County. She's here tonight.
All right, and Viper's my guy, so I'll, I'll.
And he knows, he knows about this. So we've sent him a letter also.
Okay, thank you.
I'm so glad I let her go first. I'm Jeff McComas. Y'all met my wife. In my opinion, ma'am, you asked what this is? This is a government subsidized transfer of wealth land grab. Every bit of it. One of the things we did in Lincoln County, and I just wanted to share this with you guys. We come up with a group that raised some money, that give the money to the commissioners to pay for the postage because for as many people that are in here, I'll guarantee you, there's ten people that know nothing about what's going on. So through the, our county commissioners, and they agreed to do this, they sent out a letter on their letterhead as a notification, not for or against, just saying, hey, this is what's going on. We did one portion of, of Lincoln County and one district. Now they've asked us and we're going to do another one. We still have people in our area and, and we're talking about wind turbines, okay? But it all ties together, just like we understood. We still have people that look every day, go, I had no idea this was going on. We've had several meetings with over five hundred people. We've had lots, like one hundred people meetings. We've had lots of people. This has been going on since February. We've been on the news three times. This is, but there's still people that aren't aware. So talking to your neighbor, yes, talk to your neighbor. But very effective if you guys would do that, raise the funds. A county's limited in their funds. It doesn't take a lot. You got to do bulk mailing, put it on your letterhead and send it to all your people. And that helped us. I just wanted to share that with you guys.
One thing that, uh, we did do is, is I got with Jason and, uh, we got a list of all the homeowners south of Forty-fourth, all the way across the county excluding those that live in, uh, uh, the housing developments because the power line's not going to go directly over them. And we, we emailed that to Rebecca and I believe it was a hundred and seventy-seven pages long.
I think so.
So, uh,
And we sorted it alphabetically, so we have that to help finish the flat map that Commissioner Chair Cabot got for us, a flat map of the county. And that's why we asked for your information as you came in, if you're for or opposed to the corridor. And to try to find and color in every person opposed on that flat map and using that PDF to get the legal description if you don't know that or have that. Go ahead.
Anyway, uh, from my, I don't think this board would mind sending out letters. Uh, I don't know that we can do that since this isn't really, uh, something, it, it would be outside. Uh, I don't know that we can do that, since this isn't really, uh, something, it, it would be outside of what we can normally spend taxpayer funds on, I'd have to verify that with the ADA. But as he said, if, if they raised the money to, to pay for postage, I, I would imagine that would be something that we could do and would be willing. I've had some issues just trying to get ingress egress agreements with the landowner where we're trying to build a road. And, and they've been handed so much by these wind turbine companies and power line companies. If, if they get any kind of mail like that, they just throw it, because they don't, they're not interested in selling, they're not interested in easements and things like that. So it, it may, it may help reach it. Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
My name is Robert Bradley, and, uh, I've been fighting Simron Link for quite a while now. They've been coming out to, uh, they come out to my house, and I ran them off probably three different times. They keep sending me stuff. Here's an example, here's a whole folder of stuff they want me to sign, that's got easements, telling me what I'm gonna do, telling me what, that I'm gonna provide, a way for them to bring their stuff on to my property, and I'll have to provide them with a clean passage. I mean, it's a bunch of crap, and I've told them every single time, I'm not interested in what you're offering, I don't want it, you know, get out of my face. But, and then Saturday I got a, a, a voicemail from a lady, oh, I, I've taken the place of the man you've been talking to, and I said, so what? You know what I mean? But anyway, I didn't call her back, she left me a long message saying, oh, well, it's going through, we, we need to, we need to finalize things on what we've sent you, you know? It's like, you know what? You don't wanna come out there and face me and my dog, and we're gonna deal with you, you know? I'll lock the gate and you can stay for a while, you know? I, I don't, I'm, I'm a God-loving man, but you know what? There's a place for people like that, and it ain't on my property. But I'm just telling you, stand up for what's right for you. You know? I'm a disabled veteran, I work for Department of Energy out in Colorado, at a nuclear weapons side, I got exposed to that, just a bunch of bad stuff. They're supposed to be paying for my healthcare. Luckily, the VA takes real good care of me, and I'm proud to be an American citizen, you know? And I'm proud, proud to be a victim. But, you know, my, my, my cousin was a county commissioner here a while back, and, and his brother, Benny Bradley, did grading and dozer work, you know? Bradley's been around here for a long time, but you know what? People, you just gotta stand up for what, and, and don't give up. They're gonna send you out all this intimidating mail, they're gonna try to make you think that, yeah, we got the upper hand. I don't care if they do have the upper hand, they're still gonna have to get past all the farm equipment and everything else in my driveway to get to my land. They ain't coming to my driveway. Anyway, thank you.
Well, uh, from, from speaking to some of others, in, like, in K County and, uh, some other counties, uh, they come on acting like they've got somebody else's easement. In order to try to get yours. And, and what they're doing out in Garfield County, from my understanding, is they're playing landowners against each other, saying, well, your neighbor's gonna sign if you don't. And then they're gonna get this windmill, it's a different deal, the windmills, but, but it's kinda the same principle. Uh, trying to play us against each other, like, they're coming through, you might as well sign it, your neighbor's going to. Uh, so I would just encourage you to stay linked in with, uh, the website, Facebook, I think you have a Facebook going?
Yes.
And, uh, keep up to date on that. And, uh, I, I'm sure Senator Hall and some of our other representatives are, that they've heard this tonight, they see the turnout for six PM on a Monday night. And, uh, I believe that we've gotten their attention, and, and, uh, I will be in contact with them, and, and I will share with Rebecca what, what I find out. And I believe it'd be beneficial to schedule another meeting when, when we have more information. And, uh, like everybody has said, the, the time is of the essence, uh, we, we've got to get going on this. I will also, I think I have sent you Frank Littleses and James Langford and Mark Wayne Mullen, representatives here. Uh, didn't I send you all their contact information?
Yes.
Did you make that available on Facebook?
I have at one point, I need to again.
Okay. I think if we can keep that in front of everybody, uh, that, that would be good, and I would encourage everybody to, to contact the elected officials that represent you. Uh, when, when I first took office, my predecessor had a, it was a little cartoon cutout, and it had a politician behind a podium like this, and he was out on a plank, and the caption said it, the people only do their power. And it was all these people standing on the other end of that plank. So you guys are the ones that keep us in office. So let them know that. And, and there's limited things that we can do, but, but we need to be working for you. And that's what I believe we're doing here. I believe that's what Senator Hall is doing, and these other elected officials that came tonight, they're interested in what's going on and how they can address this. I believe at this time, uh, unless...
I've got a question for you.
Okay, hold on, come on in.
I learned twenty years ago that you never sign any of these leases or documents without going to a lawyer that specializes in that. Don't ever sign them without getting legal assistance. Because that's the biggest mistake you'll ever make.
Can we hit your name?
Vera Derrickson from Garfield County.
Okay. It's, it's recent already. Thanks for driving all the way here for this.
Uh, my name's Art Biscus, I, uh, just a couple miles east of Perkins. And you're gonna tell us about the next meeting. If I hadn't seen this in the paper, I knew none of this was going on, quite frankly. If I hadn't seen it in the paper, uh, the other day, you know, whoops, some years ago, there was talk about transmission lines coming through with about the same description of the distances. But I never heard anything more about it, I thought maybe they'd come through, and perhaps it did, I don't know. But I only found out about this in the paper the other day, and, uh, I called Ms. Markham to find out where this meeting was gonna be. I don't know where he posted it. I went to the county commissioner's website, and I couldn't find anything, maybe I'm just stupid, couldn't go through there and find it. But how are you gonna notify us, other than this email? Is it gonna come out in the newspapers? Or how are we gonna know where the next meeting is and the time of it?
Do you have a link to one of this? Okay, well, well, all the agendas, such as the saving is posted, uh, and a special meeting has to be posted forty-eight hours before, uh, the meeting, and, uh, so...
We'll go ahead and add a link for this particular, uh, topic, kind of toward the bottom. There's a bunch of little squares that have the various things, we'll just add one for the, uh, for National Electric, Electric Transit Corridor, and then Simron Link. There'll be a lot of writing in a little box, but you'll be able to find it, corridor, and then that'll, that'll have, uh, we'll just continue to feed stuff there, including the, any letters or any, uh, uh, resolutions that we did.
And that just reaffirms the need for every one of us to share everything we can with, with, on any social media platform, or just by going to your neighbor's house. Yeah, the, the agendas go to all the news press, uh, it goes to Perkins Journal, uh, still in our news press, it goes to all the media companies. Uh, and, and maybe, uh, they can put something up. But I, I would like to thank the media companies for, uh, putting the things that they have in the paper. I know the Perkins Journal and the Yale, uh, paper is in my front page, uh, and the picture that we got in our commission meeting room. So before we adjourn, I'd like to get another picture, maybe we can get that as well.
The last meeting was talking about the CR. Did anybody reach out and look out at the end, or did he already say, and all that, or help with that?
Yes, uh, we have an ambassador, I don't know if he's in the room, if he wants to speak up or not, because, uh, we're, the position he serves. But anyway, they said they were in no way related to this project. And they gave us the link, I, I put on Facebook, but I could send it to you, Dylan, probably in your phone also, and it, it shows who it is, yes, you know? Oh, SOS, let's see, Payne County SOS, save our sunsets, stop the NIATC corridor, something like that, I can, I can... Your email is over there, and your phone number or something, I'll be sending out that information. But that's what it is, look for that, at Payne County SOS, stop this.
Mike McKeever, I'm a landowner here. So Central may not be exactly involved in it, but one of the key factors in taking eminent domain is you have to directly benefit somebody in this state. And when they go by, there's a substation, there's several substations that they're trying to get right up next to, and Central's, uh, welcome with open arms. That's my two cents.
Do you all know if this is coming to Garfield County or where it is?
Uh, I had a map of, of where, I think it is, it goes through Southern Garfield. Yeah. It does go through Southern Garfield. It, it's coming from a fan handle, from, from the map that I see, it goes all the way to see. Yes. I have not reached out to OSU, has anybody?
We have not had any information, maybe someone else in your house.
I, I contacted, I contacted someone at OSU and asked them if they were for or opposed to the, uh, transmission corridor. Because they are a state organization, they're not allowed to make political statements, is what I was told.
Well, since, since OSU is a state organization, she said that they are not allowed to make political statements?
That's what her legal department said.
Okay, their legal department said that.
Oh, probably, yes.
One thing we might add to that, many of us have OSU friends, some of us might work at OSU, might retire from OSU, maybe a professor, a student there. So we all know some OSU people. So whether the university can make legally a statement, there might still be influences we would have with people up in the state. There are people that live in this corridor that are part of up in the state. So we all have an interest in this, and they do too, and, and they care, you know, those are people who...
Jason, you have it.
My name is Jason Gomez, I'm the assessor here in Payne County. My, my name's Jason Gomez, I'm the assessor here in Payne County. Just want everybody to know that my door's open, uh, access to any records. PayneCountyAssessor.org has, uh, a lot of information, digital plate books, uh, so anything I can help you with, my door's open. Uh, feel free to come by and, and, uh, ask any questions that you may have. Thank you.
I'm Lauren Derrickson from Homewood, Garfield County. And I don't quite understand this eminent domain. Now, how do you know for sure, when you're talking to these people or anybody else, that eminent domain goes with this system?
I, I don't know.
Oh, okay, uh, uh, that's fair enough. But, uh, you know, we're, we're all here to find out truth, but we can't find it. And we, y'all talk about this and that and something else, but how do you do something about it to help us save our land?
Well, that's what I think a part of this meeting is tonight, is to get everybody's concerns, and to visit, and to show how important it is. And, and some people in this room may think that this meeting didn't accomplish anything tonight. I would say it did, because it got the attention of Senator Chuck Hall, it got the attention of Molly Jenkins, Jim Shaw, and Mark Wayne Mullen's office. So it did get the attention of folks, and, and, uh, we, we are gonna continue, I am, this board, I would imagine, is gonna continue to, to seek what we can do as a Board of County Commissioners to combat this, and, and find out everything we can.
Another thing that gets me is these legislators, senators and stuff, don't know nothing about this. How come? How does these damn contractors and people that put this stuff in get their stuff done, and they don't know anything about it?
That, that could be some possible legislation that could be passed, possibly, is that if, if a, if a major line like this is gonna come into the state, that they must notify the elected officials of the state. I mean, something's gonna happen, and, and, you know, during times of trouble is when change comes.
You know, I think stuff under the table is making all this happen.
When we talked to the Corporation Commission, they sent me a webinar that they had received earlier in the year. And so our question was, well, did you talk to any landowners? How did you represent us? What did you say for us? And I really, we never got any answers on that. But so some people have been notified, perhaps, and we just don't know, or they don't admit it. The other thing, if you're a Farm Bureau member, which many of us are, we passed a resolution here in Payne County that's to be voted on November ninth at their state resolution committee meeting, uh, speaking against eminent domain. And they have a lot of resolutions evidently that go for. But if you know any of the Payne County or, or out of any county, Farm Bureau-type people, or if you wanna go to that meeting up in the city, if you're a member, it's open to you, we would certainly appreciate that being supported by Farm Bureau also.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for being here, and, uh, make sure you sign into that list, that way you can get the emails, and, uh, she will send you the contacts and the Facebook, and we'll continue to work together. I will let her know, and Rebecca know, when our next meeting will be scheduled, when we have some more updates and some more information.
Do you wanna get a picture?
Yeah, let's get a picture real quick before everybody leaves.